All right, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to order Monday, November tenth, two thousand twenty-five at seven P. M. And for the record, there was no closed session tonight, so again, no reportable action. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protim Santinas.
Aye. Oh, here, here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Dutton.
Here.
Okay, can we have everybody rise for the moment for the invocation led by Mayor Protim Sunny Santa Inez and the pledge of allegiance by Brian McNerney, our Director of Public Safety.
Please bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the give of life, the give of family. We thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for giving us a wonderful city, wonderful residents, wonderful staff. As we gather tonight, we remember those who passed away. Please keep our veterans, especially tomorrow, Veterans Day. Please bless them and bless their families. We thank our first responders, our members of the military who protect us every day. As we gather today, tonight, to discuss items for us, please give us the wisdom to decide what's best for our community. As we do our meeting tonight, please remember also those who have been affected by the government's shutdown, and also those who have suffered in Asia due to the typhoons. Please comfort them and heal them, and we ask all this in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Everyone, please place your right hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna do city council announcements. I'll go ahead and start. The Bellflower Volunteer Center is partnering with residents, community groups, and local organizations to provide food boxes and gift cards for families in need for this Christmas. Christmas donations can include gift cards, monetary contributions, canned goods, and new gifts for children. Donations can be dropped off at Bellflower Volunteer Center, and that's located at one six six one four Clark Avenue during the regular hours of the park, parks operations. Christmas donations will be accepted through December first. If you have any questions or would like to be a volunteer, please call five six two eight oh four one four two four, extension two three three one. Or you can do an email at arriba@bellflower.california.gov. And remember, we changed it from dot org to california.gov. Your support helps ensure these local families have a brighter holiday season here in Bellflower. Mayor Protim Sunny Santa Inez.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Bring the magic of the holidays to life by sending a letter to Santa Claus. Residents of all ages can write a letter to the North Pole and receive a personal response from Santa's workshop. To participate, letters must include eligible return name and address. Letters can be dropped off at any of the following letters to the North Pole locations: Bellflower Aquatic Center, Bellflower City Hall, Carruthers Park, Sims Park, and Thompson Park. The North Pole mailboxes will be available December one to fourteen during regular facility operating hours. Please know that letters received without return information or after the close date will not reach the North Pole Post Office and will be ineligible to receive a response. Participants can write their own letters or use a festive template available online at bellflower.ca.gov or at any North Pole mailbox location. For more information, please call five six two eight six six seven five one zero. That's all I, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Santa Inez. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. Show off your festive spirit this season by decorating the outside of your home and entering the City of Bellflower's Holiday Home Decorating Contest. Nominations are open now, and all entries must be submitted by Sunday, December seventh. The contest committee will visit nominated homes the week of December eighth to select the winners. Winning homes will be celebrated with a special sign and a certificate of recognition from the mayor and the city council, a perfect way to share your holiday joy with the community. For more information, please visit bellflower.ca.gov or call five six two eight oh four one four two four, extension two two one eight, I mean, two two one zero. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Los Angeles County has notified the City of Bellflower that the enrollment period for the Lead Free Homes L.A. program has been extended through November thirtieth for Bellflower residents. This program offers free lead-based paint hazard remediation services to eligible households in Bellflower. The program aims to ensure safer, healthier living environments by addressing lead paint hazards, particularly important for families with young children and pregnant individuals. Residents are encouraged to apply by November thirty to take advantage of this opportunity. Check if you are eligible, please visit leadfreehomesla.com or email leadfreehome.la@lacda.org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Wendy Morris.
Thank you. Good evening, Bellflower. Celebrate the start of the holiday season at Bellflower's annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony on Friday, December fifth, at six thirty P. M. at Friendship Square, right here at the corner of Bellflower Boulevard and Belmont Street. Enjoy an evening filled with festive fun, including carolers, real snow sledding, activities for kids, and a special visit from Santa Claus. Families can also mingle with the Grinch and take part in free entertainment for all ages. This community tradition brings neighbors together to share in the joy and spirit of the season. Don't miss the moment the tree lights up the heart of downtown Bellflower. For more information, please call five six two eight oh four one four two four, extension two two six one. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris. All right, we have no presentations tonight, so we're gonna move on. Public comments, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item, and you'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on something that's not on the agenda item, this is the time to come forward and state your name and sign in.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I have a couple of things I want to touch on. First of all, I've been going to Kaiser for some medical treatments, and one of the technicians there the other day, we were talking about, she lives in Bellflower, I do too, and she commented about how thrilled she is, how the city is really improving, and it's just really getting, I mean, really nice, and she's very proud of it. So I thought you'd like to hear that, that it is being noticed by our other residents, and it made me feel really good. So, and I didn't prompt her at all, I just said I live in Bellflower, and she said she'd grown up here, and how impressed she was, how well it's doing.
Well, thank you. We don't get to hear that too often.
I know.
No news is good news in this business.
Yeah. And secondly, my fiance's mother just recently got one of our new Wi-Fi, city Wi-Fi boxes, and she is really happy with it, very, very pleased, so I thought that would be good news too. So, that's it for this evening, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to come forward?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff, and to the City of Bellflower. I did not pay for this. First of all, I would like to talk about a flag. Our flag, my flag, your flag, Bellflower's flag, or even sometimes called the city flag, which is really the Bellflower Kiwanis Club flag. The Kiwanis Club flag has a history all of its own. The idea of the flag came from a local attorney, Richard Holtz. He did all the paperwork with the state of California and Caltrans to have had deeded the Kiwanis Club of Bellflower, the parcel of land in which the flag is flown. Ken Cleveland secured the materials and the labor to erect the flagpole. The flag was dedicated in nineteen seventy-four at approximately a hundred feet tall, but that wasn't high enough, as it was stolen the very first week. It was then heightened to approximately a hundred and twenty feet. A new flag is installed by the Public Works Department every six months. The Bellflower Kiwanis Club provides each flag measuring fifty by thirty feet at the cost of twenty-two-hundred dollars per flag. When the flag is flown at half-staff, the size is thirty by twenty. The Bellflower Kiwanis Club has an endowment fund from which payment for the flags and the maintenance of the pole and surrounding area is paid. The electric bill each month is approximately one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per month, or fifteen thousand dollars a year. There is a fund that anyone can contribute to be able to keep it flying. Donations can be made to the Bellflower Kiwanis Club and given to any Kiwanian member, or by mail to the Bellflower Kiwanis Club at P.O. Box six oh one, Bellflower, California, nine oh seven oh six, Keep It Flying Fund. I know when I see that flag flying when I'm driving by, I know I'm home. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. And that's fitting for being on Veterans Day and the veterans protecting this country and the flag that flies here. Anybody else wishing to come forward and say anything? Not seeing any, then we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda. Eleven A. Mr. Smoot, want to introduce it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're gonna have kind of a tag team on this one. James is coming up, I think Beth is coming up, and Jim is coming up as well. And the item is consideration and possible action to conduct a public hearing to read by title only, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number fifteen, I'm sorry, fourteen fifty-one, an ordinance approving development agreement file number one 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 eight in a form approved by the city attorney by and between the City of Bellflower and Artesia Palm Realty LLC to facilitate the development of a self-storage facility to activate the Development Agreement Zone layover in Bellflower Municipal Code seventeen point six seven, and to amend the zone map ZC twenty-five dash oh three.
We'll let you get settled, team.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is a request before the city council includes a development agreement which would activate the Development Agreement Zone layover, known as Dazzle. The Dazzle is an overlay zone that, through utilization of a development agreement, provides a method to establish uses and developments standards that may not otherwise be allowed in the underlying zone. The request is to, the request also includes a zone change to amend the zoning map to Dazzle. The proposed development includes the construction of a one hundred and fifty-two-thousand-three-hundred square foot self-storage facility, and the design of that facility differs from traditional self-storage facilities, where in those types of designs, access is made via a drive aisle to the front of the roll-up doors, whereas in this modern design, the facility requires parking on the outside of the building, and access is made through the interior hallways of the building. As you can see in the aerial, the site is bounded in the yellow line there. That site is west of Lakewood Boulevard and north of Artesia Boulevard. Access to the site, I'm gonna use my laser pointer here, forgive me. Access to the site is made via Palm Street in this area. This is, there is the end of this cul-de-sac, that would be the western access, and then via Artesia Boulevard, you can navigate through the hotel parking lot and access the site at this point. There is a easement signed to this lot that allows for shared access to that site. Zoning is currently the West Artesia Boulevard Commercial Highway Planning Area that is also known as the WASP. Surrounding land uses consist of an existing extended stay hotel, which is this, and then on the south, there are multiple uses. These two uses are motels, and then there's a vehicle storage facility here. On the west, this is the Habitat for Humanity Warehousing and Retail Facility. Additionally, also, yes, State Route ninety-one here and Caltrans right-of-way to the north. The building, this is the site plan, the building will be four stories and be climate-controlled. There will be approximately eleven hundred storage units, but the exact number will be determined during the building and fire plan check phase. Landscaping includes about three thousand square feet of landscape area, and that will include a mix of trees and drought-tolerant plants. A six-foot-high CMU wall is proposed at this location here, adjacent to the Caltrans right-of-way, and a wrought iron fence is proposed on the south property line, separating these uses on the south and the building here. No fencing is proposed along the west, oops, back up here, forgive me. No fencing is proposed on the east and west side. That's where the development agreement comes into effect, which allows a city to deviate from typical development standards that would require a CMU wall along the east, west, and south side, but due to the multiple buildings and the location of the hotel on the east side, this allows for different fencing and wall materials that may be more appropriate in this particular case. Access gates to the enclosed secured area, there's an access gate here, and there's another, a second access gate here. This is the primary drive aisle that services the site. There are parking spaces in this general location that are outside the secured fencing, and then there are parking and loading areas in the secured zone here. This is the office at this location, and this is the entrance to the primary entrance to the facility with elevators in this location, and there's some storage facilities and offices here as well, storage rooms here. Also, as you can see on this particular exhibit, you'll see that there are fire staircases in this location, there's a fire exit there, also there's a fire staircase here and a fire exit there. Also, I want to make clear that in addition to the, there are twelve parking spaces allocated to this facility, but there's also eleven parking spaces shared, through a shared parking agreement that was approved in two thousand twenty-two that's still in effect on the existing hotel site to the east. So this is the primary, I guess, facade that you're gonna see, elevation you would see from the freeway, which is also the primary entrance to the facility. The building is designed a contemporary, modern style, and it's intended to look like an office building. Colors are mostly grays and whites, but you can also see there are decorative green-tone panels, green here and kind of a teal green here, that kind of are used in different areas of the building. Materials include stucco, this area, and here is what you'll see is stucco paneling, and this is a corrugated metal that wraps around the front of the facade here. This is the facade that faces the existing hotel on the east side. Again, you're gonna see a lot of stucco on this side, you'll see the decorative panels here, windows in this location, and decorative landscaping panels on the south side here in this location. I'm gonna turn it over to Jim, and he's gonna take over.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. In addition to the development agreement benefits that James mentioned earlier, development agreements can also codify the public benefits and mitigation measures that can be associated with a particular project or entitlement, and in this case, they're based on this particular use. So in this case, we have mitigation payments, which I will go over for you in the next slide. We also have a public benefit that's the ability to install high-speed wireless facilities to facilitate public access to the internet, and then there's also improvement of the vacant real property, which would increase property tax revenue, and then the developer is proposing to provide security patrols a minimum of twice daily for three years after the project completion. In addition, we have the mitigation payments, and I'll expand on those now. These were intended to offset the estimated one hundred and seventy thousand dollars in annual transient occupancy tax revenues that a sixty-nine-room hotel would have otherwise generated at that location, which was what was originally proposed there. They are proposing four ways that this can be paid. First, it could be done in annual payments of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year phased in over three years, thirty percent in year one, sixty percent in year two, and then one hundred percent from year three onward. There's a lump sum city-initiated payment of two-point-one-two-five million dollars after five years from the date of Project C of O or Certificate of Occupancy, and then there's a lump sum developer-initiated payment of, again, two-point-one-two-five million dollars, but this is after ten years from the date of the project's C of O, and then there is a one-time payment option at the city's request for two-point-five million dollars, which would be done prior to issuing the final certificate of occupancy for the project.
You wanted to have the honors of the recommendation? Okay.
And with that, Mayor, members of the council, staff does recommend, one, that the city council open the public hearing, take documentary and testimonial evidence, and after considering the evidence, read by title only, waive first reading, and introduce ordinance one four five one, or, two, alternatively, discuss and take other action related to the item. Staff is available to take questions, I believe the applicant is here as well.
Anybody have any questions of staff at the moment?
First of all, I'd like to disclose that I had expert communication with the applicant together with Mr. Kanabi in the presence of Mr. Wang Suli. Question, can you bring up this slide first?
Mr. Mayor, real quick, I do briefly have the city attorney looking at something for me. There's information that I just came across that I did not catch previously, so I may, out of precaution, need to recuse myself. City Attorney, if you would like to.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, perhaps the applicant or their representative could come up here for a question?
Okay, can the applicant come to the podiums? I take from a question from the city.
Do you mind you open the public hearing?
No, it's not a public hearing, it's just a question to see if Victor's staying or going, is what I take it.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Just let me know who you are.
I'm Jason Borg.
Okay. This is a development for Terrace Group Holdings, and the developer's listed as Terrace Group Holdings on this particular document, but that's not the applicant that submitted an application.
The applicant is Artesia and Palm Realty.
Okay, and what is Terrace Group Holdings?
Terrace Group Holdings is the development platform.
What does that mean?
That's the holding company of Artesia and Palm.
Okay, so why is this a development for Terrace Group Holdings when your application has a different LLC on it?
The LLC, we have a specific LLC for all our developments, so the holding entity for this development is Artesia and Palm. Artesia and Palm is under the umbrella of Terrace Group Holdings.
So, that's the answer to your question. I agree that it is a bit confusing based upon these documents, because I didn't look at the renderings myself.
I looked at the renderings, I didn't look at the title. Thank you, City Attorney, that helps me make my decision. For the record, Mr. Mayor and colleagues, I think you all know that I work for a children's mental health nonprofit. My job has been in the nonprofit world for over twelve years, and I am the Director of Development for this children's mental health nonprofit. Every year, I host two annual events, fundraisers, open to the public, anyone's allowed to support and attend, and at the time of reviewing, the applicant was, is Artesia Palm Realty. Unfortunately, in the material, Terrace Holdings is, did make a contribution at one point in time, and the twelve-month has not passed, so I can't participate on this item, and I think it's just out of precaution for our city, and so that things are done properly. And again, for those of you who don't know, it's Children's Mental Health Nonprofit, it's open to the public, anyone's able to support the organization, and so I just want to make sure that I don't cross any legal boundaries here. So I'm gonna recuse myself. With that said, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, you can sit down now.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
That was confusing for me, too.
It was. I was kind of surprised about that. Anyway, Jim, can you clarify the fencing? In terms of the east and the west side of the building? Okay. So what do we have now in terms of that property and wood springs?
So right now, there's proposed, there's nothing there now, obviously, but right, well, there is.
So there's nothing, right now?
Well, right, so, right now, they're proposing, they have nothing there. I think the intent here is that if there were to be a fence or a wall there, that it would essentially be a negative to the aesthetic of this building. I mean, we can go to that elevation, and it's, you know, it's a pretty nice, pretty nice-looking building. There's really no security reason to have a fence there. There is, like I said, there is a fire exit there, and if there was a fence or a wall there, that would force, if this building was on fire, it would force anybody escaping the building to have to run along possibly a burning building. In this case, if there is no fence or wall there, it's just an easier exit. But again, I think the primary reason is just for aesthetics.
Okay, how about on the west side?
On the west side, truly the purpose, the primary purpose there, again, one again is the fire exit here, but the building here, this existing warehouse, it's essentially five feet away, that's a zero property line, it's located around the property line, so to build a wall there or a fence there, it would create such a constrained area or space between the proposed building and the existing building, that it would just be a very tight spot, and when staff looked at this, we felt that that's, you know, that this building actually serves as a wall itself.
So basically, the barrier is gonna be the wall against the wall?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks for the clarification. And... Can you talk about the, Jim, in terms of the four options? Can you explain that?
Your question, Sunny, or council member?
Can you show it first?
Sure. So the mitigation payments?
No, the four options, in terms of payments?
Oh, the four options.
The four options.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, so, the first option is annual payments of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. That's based on what, the one-seventy?
The one-seventy is based on the money that would have been generated by the sixty-nine-room hotel.
What's the room rate?
The room rate at that time was approximately a hundred dollars a night, if I remember.
A hundred dollars a night, okay.
I'd have to, that's a guess, that's an educated guess.
Don't guess.
Okay.
That's a guess.
Oh, I don't have that.
Okay. And, so if there's no action taken, and what will be the mode of payment? If nothing is selected by the council?
If nothing is selected by the council, they would pay us $170,000 annually.
That's the first option.
Correct.
Basically, okay, okay, all right, and then--
Yeah, we don't necessarily need a selection by the council on these options tonight.
No, 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 theoretically. And how did you come up with $2.125 million?
The developer came up with that amount.
Can you explain?
Yes, they based that on an 8% discount rate on a net present value over perpetuity. And we have, Anna is very prepared to explain that further if we need to, but she's ready and waiting in the wings, so it's a net present value calculation.
I'd be glad to hear that.
Yeah.
All right, especially the word "in perpetuity."
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Jim, thank you so much for the confidence. So when there is, the timeframe is not defined. There is a financial formula used to come up with a present value. So it's a very simple formula. You take the cash flow that's promised over the discount rate. So in this case, it's 170,000 divided by 8%, and that's how you get to $2,125,000.
Okay. It sounds really good, I mean, it sounds good in perpetuity, but in reality, it may not be the case, right? It's a formula.
It's a formula.
Because you have to come up with something. Because to come up with a value, you need to have a payment rate, a term, and discount rate.
Usually, the timeframe is defined.
Right, exactly.
In this case, when it's not defined, then it defaults to this formula to figure out the present value.
Okay, so-- I'm using my accounting background here. The IRS uses for 39 years to depreciate hotels. Using MAKERS, that's Modified Accelerated Recovery System. Can you tell us the estimated value, apples to apples, using 8% discount rate? How much will be the payment using 39 years as a term?
So if you discount back 170,000 using an 8% discount rate, the present value of that would be roughly $2,181,000.
$2,181.
Considering the first payment is made immediately.
So it's a little bit more than in perpetuity?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not, that drives my point. It's not really in perpetuity. It sounds good, but in reality, it's not. 39 years is better than perpetuity. The city has money invested in different funds.
Correct.
What's the average rate that the city is earning?
So the LIF interest rate that just got recently published was around 4.15%.
4.15. Can you estimate? If we were to use that discount rate on the $170,000 payment per year, how much would be the net present value in perpetuity again?
So using the formula the developer used to come up with the 2.125, and just replacing it with the 4% discount rate, it would be roughly half, or double.
Double?
Yeah, double.
So four and a half million?
Yeah.
Four and a quarter million, excuse me, so four and a quarter million.
About 4.1 million.
4.1.
Yeah, because when you cut the discount rate of 8% in half, which is roughly what we're receiving right now, you just multiply that 2.125 by 2, because it's an inverse relationship. When the discount rate goes down, the present value goes up.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. And Jim, back again to you. Sorry about that.
No, it's all right.
So the $170,000 a year doesn't account for inflation, CPI, so it's a fixed amount?
Correct.
Okay. So in, let's say, 39 years, I'm just using the IRS estimated useful life, the room rate will not be $100 anymore?
Correct.
Okay, because for example, I think Motel 6--
Is not $6?
Was $6 in 1965. And now Motel 6 is about 75, I mean, just, all right. Okay, that's it. Oh, one more thing. How many employees will they have here? In self-storage?
I apologize, council member, I do not have that information readily available.
We can ask the applicant, that's fine, yeah, okay. And one more thing. I want to make sure they ask you questions to make sure that you're given a fair share. Elizabeth? I'm an equal opportunity questionnaire. Explain to me the development impact fees of 1.5 million. So that's based on some formula?
Correct.
What I'm getting at is, so are there any restrictions into the use of that money? What is it for? I mean, for the general public?
Sure.
What is the development impact fees?
Mayor Protem Santanis, so there are three development impact fees that are applicable to the project. The first one is the public facilities fee. Those funds are to be used towards public facilities, and that it also includes maintenance of our public facilities or the construction of new facilities. There is also a public safety development impact fee that's also applicable to this project. And this is essentially fees that go in to assist in our public safety services.
Okay.
And then lastly, there is a transportation fee that impacts traffic in our roads, and that also, that impact fee also goes towards the maintenance of those roads and street improvements. So these are considered mitigation fees. So all three of those fees combined, it, it's also based on the square foot, so it's a price per square foot. So total, between the public facility fees, the public safety fees, and the transportation fees, it is roughly $1.54 million.
Okay, but in terms of the impact, it's basically reimbursing the city for the impact of this development to these three services. So it's not something that, it's not like a general fund, for example?
Correct.
That's extra money to be spent. So the money is already spoken for, essentially.
Yes.
Essentially.
Those, that money goes into those specific fund accounts.
Because there's an increase in expenditure in those funds. So for example, let's say, public safety, because there's going to be some activities going on there, there's going to be some impact on the public safety cost, so to speak. So it's not really a free money that the city can spend for something else.
That is correct.
Other than those, okay, very good. All right, that's all I have for now, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other questions? You have nothing? Do you have anything, Dan?
Yes, I was just trying to-- But on what, we have other fees that not applicable, and maybe you could explain. I understand that schools would not have necessary for a school, because we're not building a place that children are going to be housed and need to be educated, so that's not on the table. But we do have a public arts fee, is this exempt from that?
Councilmember Coops, there is actually a school fee. So there is actually, even though this is a commercial project, there is an actual fee for the school district that's based off of a commercial rate, which is a lot lower than the residential rate.
Is that included in the 1.5?
That is not included in the 1.5. The 1.54 is only the development impact fees that are due to the city, not any outside agency.
So they have responsibility to this, to Belfar Unified, a small amount, you think?
It's actually in Paramount School District, so--
Oh, it's on the other side of Lakewood Boulevard, yes.
Correct, yes. And then the public art fee, there's actually, the Belfar Municipal Code, there's two ways. For any project, the public, there's two ways to do it. You either pay in in Luffy, or you propose public art. And both are equal to 1% of the project valuation. So the developer could choose to install an art piece, in which case, that has to come back before the council for approval, or they can pay 1% in Luffy.
So what I've seen here, we've not hit a proposal for any art on the property as of now, have we?
Correct.
And that'll be determined at a later date?
If they choose to install the art.
So they can do it on their own, or we will take their 1%?
Correct.
And then as far as the park fee, not applicable?
The park fee is not applicable because this is a commercial use.
Which I thought was the same thing with the education fee, but what do I know?
That's the school district, anyway.
Right. Okay, and-- Okay, I get it, thank you.
And I'd just like to add that there's times in, on fees, that if it's a certain project that benefits the retail or foot traffic or housing, or quotas that we're supposed to have housing in, and we've been known to forgive impact fees. And so there's, there's ways to loosen the belt on the impact fees because I guess, you know, as Mayor Protem said, there, you know, there's fees to pay for things that are going to go on existing, and we've waived it before. So if they're, you know, not charged, then you still pay in out of the general fund to take care of the stuff. I just want to use that as an example.
And Mr. Mayor, usually when we do something like that, we're doing it in a similar way to this project, through a development agreement whereby we're, along with the developer, discussing the public benefits associated with that project. Some of the ones you use, for example, public art, open space, et cetera, are places where we can say, because this project is providing some public benefit, we can offset in other ways. Development agreements allow us to do those kinds of things.
Just like the art fee, if you put, if the developer chooses to put it in a, in a community bucket, then it's in the, it's in the art bank to, for the city to spend on another day at another location.
I have another question.
Yeah.
Elizabeth, I'm under the impression, correct me if I'm wrong, that currently, the developer has agreed with the 1.5. He's acceptable of that figure. And we are now to choose one of the four items, methods, to pay the yearly fee. Am I, am I right in thinking that, or are we still debating that?
No, that is correct. The development agreement process and the negotiations, that would have been a time for the developer to negotiate a reduction in impact fees.
But that's been done already?
That has not been requested.
Okay.
And so the developer is well aware that the impact fees are applicable to the project, and was informed that it would be, the fee that would be due would be based upon when they obtain the permit, because that impact fee goes up, I believe, on an annual basis.
So in other words, when we do a development agreement, the effect of that development agreement is it takes those fees and the processes and the codes that we have in place at that particular time, and it locks those things into place. That's the benefit that a developer gets out of that development agreement. The city, on the other hand, negotiates out the public benefits associated with it, in this case, the ones that Jim laid out. To your question about the options to select, we don't necessarily need a selection from you. If you want to give us direction, of course, we're happy to take any direction you'd like to give us, but we don't necessarily need you to select that this evening for that purpose. That's something we can address down the road.
There's plenty of time.
Right, there's plenty of time for that.
Yeah, these are just what the developer has offered.
Yeah, the options--
And four different ways that we get to choose, and we got to see, you know, the Certificate of Occupancy to decide.
Yeah, the, when we were in front of you discussing this project in some capacity previously, the council had talked about a number of ways to structure this. And so the options the developer came back with were ways that the city could effectively elect to take one of those options in a way that benefits the city the most. So by approving this development agreement, effectively, you would be allowing us to make that decision down the road.
All right, thank you for the answer. I get it. I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Borg had no surprises when we talk about this, that he's well aware and has basically agreed to the 1.5, and will accept one of the four that we choose later. Or a better, or some hybrid of this.
Yeah, he's aware of the whole staff report.
Right.
We can talk to him, too, when he comes up.
Thank you.
If there's no questions further to staff, let's, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Move the, open the public hearing.
A motion on the floor by Councilmember Coops, and a second by Mayor Protem, Sonny Santanis. Without objection, that'll be the order. Anybody in the audience want to come up and weigh in on this project? That, come on up, any, anytime. Just sign in, please, and then state your name and the mic so we get it on the recorder, and then take her away.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
My name is Frankie Miranda. I am a resident for Vance Mobile Home, which is a couple of feet away from this project. Victor's down here, so I kind of wanted to thank him for the help that he's been providing for us around that area. As I mentioned before in the past, attending these meetings, I'm looking forward for a project like this. I feel like it's going to benefit the community a lot. During the time of this, we have seen improvements. Less transients, less homeless people. Of course, the improvement can always get better. And we thank also for the security that's been coming on twice a day, sometimes even three or four times a day, which is making the community a whole lot better than it was initially a year ago. And I really hope that the decision is made wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Frankie. Anybody else want to voice an opinion on this project? I saw you this morning at the veterans' ceremony.
Long time no see, Mr. Mayor.
Break bread with you in the morning and have tea at night.
Yeah.
Or bed.
Good evening, everybody, Mr. Mayor, City Council, members of Belfar Development, staff. I'd just like to ask a couple of things, and I'm sure it'll probably be answered by the developers. I think this is a great project. That place has been sitting, it's just a dirt lot for a long time, I would suspect. And I think this would be a great way of the city having an income stream. My concern as a prior law enforcement officer is how do we guarantee that what is being stored in those places? And I'm talking about the evil stuff, the illegal fireworks and the chemicals. And I'm not asking for an answer from you. I'm hoping that these folks over here will answer that question later on. But I'm looking forward to this project going through, and I think it'd be a great asset for the city of Belfar. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Yeah, there used to be a trailer park there, and I'm trying to, you said it's been vacant a long time, and I'm just thinking, when the city, the city bought that and a redevelopment found the Bluebird Trailer Park. And it had to be longer than that. No? Yeah, yeah, 15, yeah. 15, 16 years, okay. Been vacant that long, it's, yeah, didn't realize how long it was vacant until you mentioned that. Anybody else in the audience want to come forward? Got smiley people in the backseat over there. All right, let's, let's get the applicant up here and his team, and, or whoever, and why don't you come up here and explain what you got going on, and he will have some questions.
Hello, council. I want to thank you, I also want to thank city staff for presenting this project. It's been a fantastic experience for me and my team working with you guys, so I just want to thank you for that.
Okay, state your name and the record so--
Yeah, Jason Borg with Terrace Group Holdings.
Why don't you give us a synopsis of how you got there and saw the property by the back, and come up with this idea to put this storage facility in there, and just give us a little background.
Absolutely. As you know, I've been working-- Absolutely. As you know, I've been working on this project for almost three years now. I first saw this parcel listed for sale through a hotel broker, who was unsuccessfully trying to sell this property to a developer to build a hotel on this parcel. We thought it was a fantastic parcel for self-storage, not a great parcel for hotel use. I first approached the city a few years ago to discuss, you know, building storage on this, on this parcel, because at the time, there had not been any interest from any developers to build a hotel. I know when the owner of the property, who was Gold Coast Properties, I know they originally acquired this parcel from, from the city quite a few years ago, and then they rezoned it and entitled it for two hotels. One was the Extended Stay Wood Springs, which is there today, and the other was for limited service 69-room Comfort Inn and Suites Hotel. Given the economic environment prior to COVID, during COVID, and post-COVID, it didn't really, doesn't make a lot of sense for a 69-room, limited-service hotel on that small parcel with limited parking, limited street frontage. So, it didn't seem like there was any real interest from any developers for, for the hotel. So, we brought this project to the city thinking that, you know, there was a way to give the city the benefit that you would have from having a hotel on that site, and also giving the citizens of Bellflower the much, you know, needed utility of having some storage in the area. You know, I know housing is, is something that the council and, you know, the county is in desperate, you know, need of. And we're all continuing to kind of work to build more and more housing in the city and throughout the county. And with more housing, you know, we have more residents, and people do need storage. You know, currently, the housing units that are, apartments that are being built are getting smaller and smaller, and these residents do need this utility. And there is a shortage of supply in this area, significant shortage of supply. So, we thought, given the nature of the lot, the fact that it does have really good highway visibility, but does not have good street frontage on Artesia or Lakewood, it is a really good, it's a good site for self-storage.
Got it. That's a short story.
That is.
And you wanted to explain, I think one of the comments heard from the, my colleagues up here was the, in perpetuity.
Sure.
Why don't you explain how you got there, and I think-
Okay.
Mayor Protem might have questions.
Okay, I'm sure.
Get that over with.
So, you know, our vision for this was, we understand that the city did not prefer that there was storage here. And we know that there was a want for there to be a hotel, and, but a hotel was, was not coming. It doesn't seem like there was one coming in the near future. However, because of the economics of storage and of the site, we thought that we could offer the city, you know, the, the revenue that you would be making yearly in TOT, which is the transient occupancy tax via hotel, via hotel, via a development agreement for the storage. So, working with city staff, we came up with a number for what, you know, the conceptual or figurative yearly TOT tax revenue would be. We did use a, we did use a average daily rate of $100. I believe Jim was correct when he said that. I don't remember the exact occupancy number, but it was higher than the national average. So, the $170,000 a year is a de-risked, de-risked hotel TOT tax revenue that's stable, you know, in perpetuity. So, what that means is if there's a bad hotel year next year, or for the next three years, if there's some issue where people are not traveling to this part of the city, where a hotel would have done, you know, 70% of the revenue they did before, the city's TOT tax in that case would have been affected. However, in this case, the city's guaranteed that amount of a fully stabilized hotel year in and year out. And that's kind of how we came to that number. It wasn't, the number, the yearly number was a number that we came, came with, through collaboration with, with city staff. And we think it represents the, you know, the high end of the TOT revenue that the city would get yearly from a hotel.
The, when you did the formula, you did it, because you mentioned that there was a 69-room hotel approved on the site.
Correct.
The other one, did you go off the 69 rooms?
We did, yeah. Yeah, because the density and the parking on the site don't allow for anything more than that. So, we went off a 69-room, limited-service hotel. And I mean, I don't need to tell council, because you guys have access to the yearly TOT revenue that you do get from the existing limited-service hotels in the city. So, as you know, the revenue does fluctuate year to year. It's not, you know, a stable revenue stream. And I know that we've had discussions in the past about comparing this to the Comfort Inn and Suites next door, and, and their revenue, and I know that the Comfort Inn has been a fantastic project and is exceeding the original projection that the city, you know, had for the TOT revenue. And I don't think that this product, the Comfort Inn, can be viewed as apples to apples with that, because it's just they're totally different products, and considering there's very limited extended-stay demand in, in the area and neighboring cities, that is a really good product for this, for the city. And I think that's the reason why it's performing so well. As far as the, I'll speak to the discount rate and how we got to that. So, as I said, TOT revenue in general is highly variable, and it's dependent on occupancy, average daily rate, and market conditions. And, you know, comparable hotels in Bellflower have struggled, as, as we know, demonstrating there is significant performance risk. You know, you can look across the street at like the Red Roof Inn, for example. So, the rationale for the 8% discount rate, and we gave, there's a few different options. So, there's the lump sum, city-initiated option, and the developer-initiated option, which are at this 8% discount rate. I will point out that the one-time payment, which would be at C of O, is really at like a 6.75% discount rate. So, it's lower than the 8%. But the 8% or a discount, applying a discount rate to a project like this really kind of reflects the market risk and the uncertainty similar to hotel-based cash flows. So, at a 3% to 5% rate, which is kind of what the city potentially borrows at, it would assume a guaranteed bond-like revenue. And it's not realistic for a limited-service Comfort Inn and Suites. So, hotel and real estate investors typically underwrite like a 10% to 15% equity returns in smaller markets. So, like, the 8% represents kind of a fair balance midpoint, and I think actually a generous midpoint between kind of public sector and private sector return expectations. I will point out also that, you know, this one-time payment of $2.5 million, you know, the upfront payment, which kind of represents the present value of $170,000 in perpetuity at a 6.75% discount rate, it provides the city with immediate capital while removing, you know, future volatility and operational risk from, of a hotel. But also, if the city were to take that payment and invest it at the, I think it was 4.5%, over the 39-year lifespan that you were pointing out, Sonny, I believe the compounded rate would be over $14 million. I have to kind of, I don't know the exact math.
I did some numbers, and that's one of the numbers I come up with.
Yeah.
14 million.
Why are you compounding? Because we are talking about discounting rate.
Oh, no, no. I'm just saying if the city were-
That's irrelevant.
Okay. I, I'm just saying that if the city were to take that payment and invest it over the course of that 39 years that we were highlighting, that there would be a significant gain from that investment. Correct. Yeah.
You were talking about 6% or something. I think you were saying, you mentioned five and six. If we, if the two, the two and a half million dollars was put in an interest-bearing account at that kind of five or 6%, then it comes up with the money.
I think at four and a half percent, which is what, is your current interest, interest rate.
So, you're using for any half for that 2.5 million?
Correct. Yeah.
Good, okay.
Yeah, that's all I'm pointing out. It really is, you're correct. It has nothing to do with the discount rate. It's more just kind of show-
You're talking about the impounding, that's why-
Exactly.
It's irrelevant.
Okay. And I think really the point that I'm making and explaining here is kind of, you know, the discount rate and what the city's borrowing rate are, are two totally separate rates. You know, what the current, today's interest rate is, what the city's borrowing at, and the discount rate applied to a limited-service hotel are just, they're totally separate things. I mean, they all kind of live in the same world of interest rates, but, but they can't, you know, as you know, Sonny, the, an interest rate or a rate is based on, you know, the risk. And in this case, it's like, what are the risks of future cash flows? So, to say that a limited-service hotel had a 4.5% bond-like risk would just, would be inaccurate if we are kind of viewing this project on its merits of comparing it, and it's coming in place of a, of a limited-service hotel. And that's really just the point that I'm trying to make. But I do understand what you're saying and how it could be kind of confused with the interest rate.
Any questions?
Of course they do.
Well, yeah, or anybody else?
Let Sonny continue.
Yeah, Donkey Sonny, you're still on board.
Okay, I just interject because of the, because of the compounding.
Right.
Anyway, Jason, thank you so much for the, for trying to give us more money. So, a couple of questions I asked earlier. How many employees do you expect to employ?
There'll be two full-time employees working at the site at all times.
Two employees at all times, okay. That's seven days a week?
Yes, seven days a week.
All right. When you say, oh, if you were given the, the green light tonight and started construction, when do you expect to be finished?
We expect to move as, as fast as possible. So, if we are given the green light tonight, we start working on construction documents tomorrow. We expect we should be done and submitted in the next eight, six to eight weeks on our side. We would then submit for plan check to the city.
So, when do you expect to have the certificate of occupancy?
It's hard to say. We, we have a schedule, but a lot of that is out of our control. A lot of that is in the city and plan check and-
Give an estimate.
Sure.
One year, two years, three years, five years?
No, 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 no. We hope to be under construction in April of next year.
Okay.
And we then estimate that the project's going to be somewhere around 12 to 14 months.
So, you're looking about two years?
Two years, yeah.
Two years, okay.
A little less, yes. So, June of '27.
Between 18 months and two years. Okay. So, going back to the one-time payment of two and a half million, that two years, that money is going to be discounted at 8% in two years. The value will not be two and a half million anymore, right?
Well, not necessarily-
I'm just saying.
Sure. Well, I think we-
It's, it seems like it's a lot of money compared to 2.125, but the city wouldn't expect that two and a half. If the city chose to get that kind of payment in two years, that, the value of that money is not two and a half million anymore. I'm just trying to illustrate that.
Yes.
Since you're very fond of discounting rate, so I want to talk it back to you.
Okay, so I will go back to kind of how we came to this whole, you know, the vision for the payments to begin with. The purpose of the payments were, we wanted to compensate the city for a hotel. So, if, if someone was, were to build a hotel on this site, they would be going through the same process. They would be going through plan check, then they would be going through construction, which would take considerably longer than, or maybe slightly longer than our construction time. And then, once that hotel was open, they would start generating revenue. And once they started generating revenue, they would begin to pay the city TOT. But it wouldn't be until a hotel was open that they would begin generating revenue for, for the city. I think the way we are looking at our payments are the same way. We, you know, we, we need to go through plan check, we need to go through construction, and then, once we open and we start generating revenue, that's when we would start kind of paying the city as well. And, and that's why we always kind of, why our, the structure was kind of in place of the TOT revenue from a hotel, which wouldn't come kind of day one to the city.
Okay. And earlier, you're mentioning, mentioning about borrowing, the city's borrowing rate.
Yes.
What's the relevance of the city's borrowing rate?
Oh, I was just, the relevance was just to say how much the city, how much your money would compound if the city were to take the one-time payment at the borrowing rate.
It should be the investment rate, not the borrowing rate, because we're investing the money. If you're giving us money, we're going to invest it.
Oh, I misspoke then. You're correct. Yes.
We're not borrowing. We have the money. Okay. I just want to clarify. And also, you were mentioning about using 8% because of the risk.
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. I, I mean, I, I think like I said, there's, TOT revenue for a limited-service hotel is, is, you know, highly variable and is, is not a guaranteed rate. So, you know, in order to come up with a discount rate, there's a risk applied to whatever you're discounting.
Is it your risk or the city's risk?
It's the risk of receiving those future cash flows, and that's what the discount rate is. So, the, the future cash flows are the $170,000 a year. And it's, what is the risk that the city is going to receive those cash flows on a 69-room Comfort Inn and Suites Limited Service Hotel? So, for example, if, if, if it was, let's, let's just say it was an Apple Store, which we would all agree is, is a very low-risk asset that if it was there, it would probably continue on for the next 30 years with growing revenues. That would be a low-risk asset. You know, a limited-service hotel is a higher-risk asset. And that's, that's why it has a higher rate.
So, put it another way.
Yes.
You're coming to the city. So, based on what you're saying is, the city will take some risk in terms, or try to compensate you for the risk you're taking, in a way?
No.
Yes, that's what you're saying, because you're discounting, because the risk, you're taking the risk, and your revenue is going to be risky, so to speak.
Right.
But as far as it's concerned, we don't care. You come here, you do your business, you pay your taxes.
Right.
So, why would the city kind of shoulder some of your risk?
I'm not asking this, sure.
But in a way, because you're factoring your risk, and you're transferring that part of that risk to the city.
No, it's actually, it's, it's the variable nature of TOT payments. So, it's not, it's not my risk. It's what would the city's risk be in receiving a steady stream of income from a hotel every year, and we're trying to put a rate to that. So, if we're coming up, if we're coming up with a net present value formula, a net present value formula requires a discount rate. And, and the way that discount rate is figured out is based on what is the risk of those future cash flows? If, if I was borrowing money from a lender, if I was borrowing equity, so, from a lender to build a Comfort Inn and Suites in Bellflower, I would be borrowing that money at equity at a 10% to 15% interest rate. If I was taking debt out to build that same hotel, it would be a 9% to 10% a year interest rate to borrow money, because it's a higher-risk asset.
That you're paying, that you'll be paying, right?
Yeah.
But the city doesn't care in terms of, in terms of your paying. We don't care about whether you're paying 12%, 9% interest rate on your development. We don't care.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, no, no, absolutely.
I'm lost here in terms of the, to me, the bottom line is, it seems to me, the first, my perception is, you're using a higher discount rate to transfer some of the risk. it seems to me, the first, my perception is, you're using a higher discount rate to transfer some of the risk to the city.
Right. And I, and I respectfully, I, I hear what you're saying, um, but the way which we are, the way which we came up with the discount rate is, and the way we, which we've kind of created this entire project and the development agreement is it's apples to apples. We are comparing our payment to the city, um, is what the city would have received per year from a limited, uh, service comfort-in-and-suites.
Yeah, but using that logic, then I would follow with how much the city would be earning if you were to give the city the money. And that means that we're going to be earning four and a half, four point one five percent. If you're following the logic for the city.
We are giving the city that money.
No, no, but the rate though.
The city has the.
If you give us one seventy thousand a year.
Yes.
The city will invest it.
Correct.
And the city will be earning four point one five percent.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. By doubling, almost doubling the discount rate, you're basically reducing your payment to the city.
No, that, that, that's, that's not correct.
That is correct.
We're, we're coming up with a value for future cash flows that is.
And I just, just illustrated earlier, if we were to use a four point one five percent discount rate.
Yes.
Okay, the, the net present value would be more than four million. Plain and simple.
No, I, I understood.
Can you come back, Anna? Uh, let's, I want to make sure that we understand each other here, okay?
I, I, I mean, I, I did understand exactly what she said, and I, I, I agreed that that's accurate.
Okay.
Um, but again.
So what's not clear here? So basically what I'm saying here is, you're cutting the payments to the city by half, by discounting it eight percent instead of four point one five percent. Are, are we in agreement?
But the four point one five percent is not the discount rate for the asset that we're substituting. It, it's, the four point one five percent is the interest rate that the city, you said, is earning on their money.
Would be, so if you give us one seventy a year.
Yes.
And I will invest it one, four point one five percent.
Yes.
Okay, that's what we're going to be earning, right? Not eighty percent.
Correct.
Okay, so.
Because that is, when, when you guys, um, invest your money, you're getting bond-like, you know.
Four point one five percent. One five percent.
So in order to come up with a net present value number, it's not based on what you are receiving in interest rate when you invest your money. It's based on what are the, the val- what, what, what is the risk of future cash flows from us?
No, you're giving us the money.
But you also have the option through our, um, proposal where you can take.
That's our, that's our option.
Right.
If you give us, if I have my way, I'd rather have the one seventy every year. And we can invest it.
And, correct. And you could also invest the two point five every year.
That's forever and ever. My children, my grandchildren will benefit out of it. As I illustrated earlier, your calculation is not in perpetuity. It's for thirty-nine years. After that, it's gone. In perpetuity to me is hundred seventy every year. So that our residents', children, grandch- great-grandchildren will benefit out of this, not just the current generation. So. I don't know what, we're, we're not communicating here in terms of the eight percent for, for a four point one five percent. Am I not clear about that? Or there's a disconnect there?
Can I?
Sure, go ahead.
But these options that you have up here and they, you know, you have one that ends in twenty years. And in the staff report, it described that, you know, it was based on, I guess, a development agreement that a hotel's life, uh, the original brand-new shiny hotel after twenty years, it's, is, I don't know if it's a depre- you know, I, I, Sonny mentioned depreciation, now it's depreciated. But we all know the old hotels in Bellflower don't bring in what they did. But I don't know one of these big ones or the, the extended stay, how that's going to act in twenty years. But basically the one seventy, um, after it ramps up the first two years and it's one seventy a year for, for twenty years. And that's, that's it. And hopefully if that's, interest is put in there every year in the bank account and compounded, then, then it gets to a point, I don't know what, what it would be, but it would, it could definitely keep driving in, in perpetuity. Even though the project, you know, is not putting any of the hundred and seventy thousand dollars in. But I do know, isn't it, a two point five at, say it's five percent, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year in interest. Is that right?
Yeah.
At five percent? Yeah. So if we take the one, the two point and a half million, then we only get, if we chose that one, then it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand, not the one seventy. So I understand what you were saying. Is the one seventy is more, because I did the math. And I did come up with a fourteen-million-dollar number. I don't know how I did, but I did. Because I was doing this, I wanted to figure out where the money was.
Well, because it compounds, right? So the first year you're getting five percent and two point five. Next year you're getting five four, five point seven and two point six, two five and, you know, and then two point seven.
Yeah, and you get there, but.
Yeah.
But, because I was actually just putting numbers on the calculator, all four of these options, what would be, what would be the best?
But yeah.
You know, the cleanest is, is just take the one, one lump sum and then you're done, we're done, and it's in the bank account.
By, by the way, Mayor, I, I checked with one of my, um, one of the motels in Bellflower, Roadway Inn.
Bless you!
Uh, the Roadway Inn was built in nineteen eighty-five.
Oh, okay.
And it's still standing.
It's just, well, it's still standing, but, but it gets, yeah, but there's a lot of raids there, isn't there?
Just to illustrate that thirty-nine years is, is a viable number, you know?
Yeah. But anyway, so I did the numbers on the, you know, the, some of those at the one seventy per year and then, you know, if we, if we kept it going for twenty years, that to me, that was the, you know, the best one versus the, you know, the lump, five-year we get to choose or ten years you get to choose or whatever, whatever's picked. And this is, you know, and I'm, I'm going to look at it as what's in the wheel, best interest for the city. And this is what you're, I'm going to call it a menu, a menu of T O T. And, and, you know, it, it doesn't have to be decided on, but these are good questions to, to ask and how we, we got there. But, but I can see your point in perpetuity, because a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year for twenty years in an interest-bearing account, and who knows what the interest is going to be in twenty years, but, I mean, it's, it's a lot of money when you, when you keep compounding it.
It's significant, yeah.
You know, so we know what simple is it does after seven years anyway. But, uh, any questions, Dan? Or Sonny, you're done for now?
Oh, well, I'm, I'll make my comments later.
Okay.
Question mark, I'm good.
So Sonny, if we were to have, I think one of the things you're concerned about, one seventy forever. If there were, you reexamine this every five years with C P I or something?
That's the other point that I would ask, because it's, it's a flat rate. It doesn't account for increase, increase in the hotel rate. Just like I, I made example earlier, Motel Six, Net Sixty-Five was six dollars.
No, they didn't have T O T then either.
No, but. And also, keep in mind, and keep in mind that we can raise the T O T rate.
Right.
No, but I think that if we were to have a, it may be a hybrid of what's up here, where we include the possibility of having a C P I every three to five years, that would increase that one seventy to a more accept, because that's your concern. One seventy, thirty years from now, doesn't have that much.
Let me just jump in. May, may, my main concern is, okay, let me just kind of stay in the position here. This self-storage to me is, you know, it's, it's hard for me to, to swallow this self-storage, because hotel to me is the number one. It's the best use of the area. Let's face that, okay? As far as I'm concerned, you may disagree, um, economic benefits, uh, employment. Wood Springs Suites has more than ten employees, and you have two employees. So I'm guessing probably it's about more than ten employees, um, that they will employ. There's also the economic, economic benefits. Don't get me wrong, I love self-storage, but it's the location as far as I'm concerned. Uh, when I was renting a long time ago, you're right, we need the storage. But whenever I go to, whenever I go to the storage facility that I'm, that I'm storing my stuff, I've never gone to a restaurant nearby. I go home, I pick up my stuff and go home. So there's no economic benefit as far as eating, whereas in a hotel, most likely, I travel a lot and I eat in the restaurant. So there's the economic benefits. My biggest dilemma here is twofold. One is inflation, C P I. It's not factored in. It's a flat rate of one seventy every year. And as illustrated earlier, hotel rates go up. And they add the ability of the city to increase the T O T rate. We can do that, okay? Number two is the discount rate. That's a hard pill for me to swallow, because we are not earning eight percent. I know what you're doing. You have to make money, okay? That's why you came up with a discount rate that will make you money. You may disagree with me, but that's my assessment. You came here to make sure that you make money, and I respect that.
Can I?
No, let me, let me finish.
Sure.
Let me, I respect that. But these are the two hurdles for me, is the inflation that accounted for in the discount rate, okay?
Ju- just in, in response to, to that comment, um, and I, I think some of the city staff can speak to that. The, the way we came up with the net present value payment in, for a perpetual payment of a hundred seventy thousand dollars a year, we, we used a, a net present value equation that, you know, is the same equation that any bank or any financial institution would underwrite a project with. So we, we did not manipulate anything or any numbers, um, to, to make more money for, for ourselves. And, and the way we came up with a discount rate in order to, to do the net present value calculation is by, um, assessing, you know, the risk of a limited-service hotel. And like I said, I think we, we came up with a generous discount rate. And, and again, it's the same way that any bank or financial institution would underwrite, um, would underwrite a net present value for a limited-service hotel. Now, I, I, I understand that, um, I, I understand your comments and I appreciate your comments, but I, I just wanted to make clear for the record that w- w- we, we're not presenting any numbers or, or playing games with any of the numbers. We, we are actually using, you know, same equations that banks would be using. Um, and I think we're trying to be as upfront with that as possible.
Well, as I said earlier, um, self-storage is second best, as far as I'm concerned. It's the second best usage for this location. But I, I'm expecting it to sweeten the pot, so to speak, because you're the second best. But, but on the, what you did is the flip side, it's the opposite. You're discounting what we could have gotten from a hotel.
I, I, I think that what we're offering the city, the city will make significantly more revenue off of our project um, in the near term and in the long term, um, that you would off, and the city would off of a, um, limited-service hotel in this location. And I, I think that's how we came up with our numbers was, we, we, the idea was to sweeten the pot. Um, and, and that's kind of what I spoke to at the beginning, where it is a steady stream of T O T income, where we're not accounting for any loss of, uh, you know, a- any bad years. The, the hotel's having a great year every year and paying T O, T O T of a great, fully stabilized year every single year. And, and that, and that's what we tried to do when we came up with these numbers and worked with city staff to come up with that number.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I don't know how we can approve or disprove this project without figuring this out. This is important.
Doesn't, no, it is. We just don't have to pick which one, because this is all that's offered to us.
That's all, but if we.
Unless this offer changes.
If we're going to amend any of those, we've got to do it now, but.
Right.
I cannot ask, if we approve it tonight and he says, hey, I'm going to start construction stuff, and he's, still doesn't know what his responsibility are.
Yeah, he's going to say, which one did you, which one did you pick?
I mean.
Yeah, because that's only on the menu.
I'm trying to put myself between him and us as to what's best for us. And Sonny, I agree with you on the hotel part, but I don't see any hotel guy, at seventy units, that's a difficult swallow. Because the parking, for, if they could get a hundred on there, we'd have the parking be a problem. But at seventy, there's nobody lining up to take the project.
Well, at some point, we, we thought of increasing the number of rooms.
No, and we got.
Which can, which we can accommodate, but there was no.
There's no parking.
Now, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Wood Springs owns the property you're considering to use, correct?
No, no.
All right. Because I thought, well, if I am Wood Springs, why won't I have a competitor next door? Because, you know, it's a whole different project that we started when it was, uh, Gold Coast or wherever you said it was.
It's still Gold Coast.
It's still Gold Coast?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought maybe it was a thirty, you know, I said, why do I want a competitor now that I bought the property, you know?
Right.
But we started this, I think, uh, the hotel sites in two thousand eighteen.
Before COVID.
I think before COVID. Then COVID put a tailspin on it. We're here. So that lot, this lot that we're talking about tonight's been vacant for eight years, and there's no one knocking at the door but the storage guy.
Well, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, I know, it's, that's what I look at.
We haven't made a dime off this thing for many years.
It has absolutely no visual from Artesia Boulevard. All it has is the freeway side. You can't, if you drive down Artesia Boulevard, you're going to, you're going to need a G P S to get to the front door. Yes, it has parking, but you know, a lot of times you wouldn't, you know, you drive through it, pass another hotel to get in the parking lot of another one. It's, it just doesn't make sense. When we approved this, these, there was two hotels that are going to get built at the same time.
Right.
With the same owner.
And we screwed up.
And, well, yeah, I think we own some of that. And then we let the, the one that goes in stand alone, but it, it appears to be doing well. And the extended-stay version that is there now, that seems to be why it's.
They're doing well.
Well, they're doing well.
They're doing really well.
You know, they should, they should have put another wing on it and took the property that we're talking about tonight, but that's not the case anymore. Um, and I, what I understand is, is talking to people over the last couple of years, if it could go higher and get more rooms, it'd pencil out, but you have no place to park.
That's right.
It's, so it's a, a catch twenty-two. You have nothing to do. So we have a land, virtually it's a landlocked parcel with just one little, uh, dead-end street into the, into, into access to it, with a back door through another pa- parking lot. It's not, you're going to be able to get a poll sign out in the front of Artesia for this place.
Well, I think the freeway's going to carry the advertising. You'll have something to promote it.
Yeah. Um, but it's, it's, I look at it as a vacant lot. It's been vacant for eight years and, and, uh, we got something good there now. And what's coming, it's, it's, it's a property in the back of a, of a major arterial in the city of Bellflower. But, you know, yes, if a hotel got here, then this is, you know, whether these calculations are correct or not, this is what's offered to us. But I thought the, you know, the, you know, I understand the, the hotels aren't always booked, so they have to come up with something that, because during the year, hotels could be, could be seventy percent, could be ninety percent, could be forty percent vacancy.
I think they factor it in.
Yeah, yeah, that's in the, in that formula somehow. But you have, you know, the, you know, the, you have annual payment. Like I said, the hundred and seventy is the best deal on that if we were to choose that. I'm not saying that's what, what's up there. That's what's offered. You know, a hundred and seventy every year for twenty years and goes into a interest-bearing account.
I think we all have a different idea of what would work the best.
I don't know. It's, it's, but you're right, Dan, is, is that's what's offered to us. We have to be, every one of us have to be good to go through that, has to be with those or somewhere.
For instance, just simple math, the one-time payment of two point five that's been agreed upon at some point, you would have to make that three point five at five percent to get a hundred and seventy thousand. And I'm doing five percent, which is a little higher than what we're usually getting. You would have to up that to another million dollars.
To get the, yeah, to get.
To get our one hundred and seventy-five.
Right, because it's, because it's, uh, at five percent, it only brings in a hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's a little shy, but yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Because that's how it was.
That's what I, in my math.
Would you say, if you, if you, he puts three point five in instead of two point five, are you in a happy place?
Yeah.
Where?
Instead of the two point five at the bottom, one lump sum, make it three point five.
Interest.
Interest. Uh, well, that's the one lump sum that's going to generate, I'm saying five percent, being generous. That's a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year that would be the interest we generate from that.
I, I can be there.
You can live with that.
I can be there.
Oh, with the two point five?
Three point five.
Three point five.
Three point five, yeah, right.
You've got to put a million dollars with it.
Or, that's why you like the one seventy.
Or the one seven, with, with C P I.
C P I.
With C P I.
Right. Now, at the same time, I, I want to have a little compassion for this project as well. I mean, he's on the hook for a million five on development fees that we're going to spend. I'm not putting that in the bank, as we have need for that.
Money spent.
Right, but nevertheless, it's money we don't have now, right?
No, but the logic there, if, if there's no development, there's no impact. There's no additional expense. That is the, that is the logic be- behind the development impact fees. If there's no development, there's no increase in services, right?
Well, we have Southwest Patrol going there a lot.
Well, that defines the, that is the very logic that we, that the developed impact phase is, was created.
But if he spends the one point five for the fees and we have another two point five, that's four million dollars. But if he spends the one point five for the fees and we have another two point five, that's four million dollars.
No, don't count the one point five because it's sunk cost. It's gone.
All right, but if we don't have anybody at the podium offering to do something with that property, I still want to have the one point five and I still have crime and I still have public art and I still have all that other stuff.
And nothing new.
And nothing new. I got dirt.
Well, but my point here is just, I don't want to rush in terms unless it's really an attractive offer. Because, again, I said, it's the second best. Time is on our side. We're not struggling for one seventy thousand dollars a year. Our finances are really wild, okay? That's my point. In terms of waiting, let me just give an example. The Bank of the West building that the city owns is just sitting there. We're losing money there because we paid for that building.
Because we had developers look at it and they don't want to do nothing with it.
We're not rushing.
But now we have a.
We're not rushing.
We have a remnant parcel that somebody wants to do something with.
We're not rushing.
But we're not rushing, but we'd have a developer chomping at the bit to go.
Something really attractive, okay, well.
But I, my philosophy on lending money, a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. Now, that's just real caustic here. If this building were put up and promises were made to pay the one seventy or whatever we decide upon, and there's an earthquake and it shakes to the ground or somebody puts a chemical in it, it burns the whole thing down. And it doesn't, it can't operate for a while. Now, I would just as soon have the money that was contributed and we can work, we don't have to worry about him selling the building or rehabbing the building or losing his insurance on the building. We are not a partner with him. We are simply took the money and put it in the bank and collected what we could. But we do not have to go hat in hand and say, hey, don't forget our one seventy, you know?
I hope it doesn't happen.
No, but it could. But we don't have that concern if we have the money upfront. We say, do what you want.
It's cleaner.
Sell it. Make partners, do anything you want, it's yours, take care of it. And, but we never have to ask for the one seventy again because we got ours. And we can invest it any way we want. And not to say, we're just using the most conservative way that we can use our monies. I like to think that if we had that money, we could use it to not only lend it to those that are improving Bellflower and we'd make a better return if we buy the properties right. And we've done that before, Sonny, you know the properties I'm talking about.
Right.
So I don't want to think everything's at four point one. It is the most conservative and most most conservative interest rate you could ever hope for. I've seen it go down one point one as well and I've seen it go to sixteen point five. So there is a.
You live a long time, Dan.
When Jimmy Carter was president.
I know exactly.
Don't remind me of that, that was my first mortgage, okay?
Yeah, so we've all seen interest change.
But we haven't seen it lately.
We haven't seen it lately.
Okay.
But I don't want to put up enough roadblocks to this project that he packs up his stuff and says, you know, sorry, guys, this ain't working economically, I'm moving on. Because there's, I don't have three guys standing behind him. And there hasn't been since two thousand eighteen. Anyway, we just, this is part of the public hearing. We should be not discussing it.
It's open, it's open. It's a public hearing.
But you understand my viewpoint, I like the money on the table. I like saying, God bless you.
But the money is too low for me, okay? The two point five is too low.
Well, and I've told you this, we're generating, last time I looked, double what we expected to come out of the Wood Springs. When he came in here, he sold it, the idea is, I'll get you one fifty out of the Wood Springs and the second hotel gets you one fifty as well. That's three hundred. Now, you could say to us, listen, you guys were greedy bastards. You're getting three hundred thousand out of that one building. What do you want out of me, you know? But anyway, I'm just getting plain devil's advocate here, what's best for the city.
Because there's a lot of rooms there, that's why.
Well, and I think the magic number is you got a hundred rooms to make this stuff work. And that we've got a hundred room hotel there, all that's left is room for a seventy hotel, a room hotel. And the parking doesn't support that. And as a result, we have no other applicants to use that property. So what else besides self-storage can you, you know, what else can we put there? And it's not on a major thoroughfare, it's in the back. Anyway, there's my pitch.
You want to tie in any or you confuse us?
But we do, we got to figure something out.
Well, we got to like something up there.
Councilmember Morris, we haven't had retail look at that property because it's a non-viable retail site because it's not located on the main thoroughfare. We even had talked to restaurants because we figured that the restaurant right next to the hotel would be a good thing, but they want street frontage, you know, so that just wasn't viable. We haven't had a hotel look at this site in quite some time. We've marketed this site at all our ICSC events. We've called hotel brokers and talked to them about that. And that's where your colleagues are getting the one hundred to one hundred and twenty room number for rooms. Because after COVID, the building costs increased so much that they needed more rooms in order to make the project pencil. And when they get the more rooms, even though we might be willing to ease up on parking standards to get a hotel on that site, they actually want the parking spaces that they need for those rooms. So it's really hard to sell that site for a hotel when it wasn't developed in conjunction with the previous one before COVID. They actually, they actually were a week away from their financing when COVID hit and it all shut down.
And Councilmember Morris, to your question about making the decision as to which of these options you choose, the financial picture remains the same, effectively the same in those, in those options. When we take that payment is really all those options are playing with. Whether we take it, we take the one seventy on an ongoing basis or we take it, you know, at year five at the city's option or year ten at the developer's option, that's the only question there and that can be determined at that point. The financials underlying that, the basis for those financials remain the same. It's worth noting that one seventy and the discount rate conversation in that, that accounts for the risk associated with fluctuations in that T O T that we would otherwise receive off of a hotel site. In other words, a hotel isn't always occupied, but even at the hundred rooms or a hundred dollars a night room rate, you're still, at one seventy, you're still accounting for a lower than one hundred percent occupancy. That's something to the tune of seventy-five percent occupancy. So you're counting for some of that. That is where that calculation is coming from. So, and that's based on the previous hotel conversation that we estimated that that's how much we would receive at that time. The calculation Jason is using accounts for that risk. Whether that discount rate is correct or not is an entirely decision you all need to apply. But that's what that's meant to, that discount rate is meant to account for is the risk associated in the occupancy of that hotel and the risk associated with that purpose. Not necessarily the risk associated with the city investing money or the risk associated with a developer developing the property. It's the fluctuation in the market associated with that T O T. That's where that risk comes from. Yeah, and as I said, this decision is to the financials, they're all based off of that to start with. So as to when we take it, it doesn't particularly matter. There's some, in one scenario, might affect us one way a little bit and one scenario might affect us another way in a little bit. But that can all be done down the road. Ostensibly, if the council approves this tonight, the project can move forward and whichever of those options is most financially beneficial to the city at that point, we can make the decision at that time.
Let me narrow something down. Seeing what I was hearing up here, this is where we're stuck. The artist rendering of the proposed project.
It looks good.
The aesthetics, except for, you know, color palettes, I guess is pretty close to what it's going to be and whatnot. Are we all, if this was, if we agreed on this, would we be somewhere of a project?
Let me ask Jason a question.
I mean.
Two employees, what are your hours of operation?
It's depending, we'll see one once we open, but seven to seven.
Okay, so you don't have anybody on site, not a twenty-four seven deal?
It's monitored, so we are adding a significant amount of security to that area. We're going to have eleven exterior cameras that are going to be monitored twenty-four seven. They'll be monitored during the day, off-site and on-site by staff. And then overnight, they'll still be monitored off-site. We will still have the, the Black Knight Patrol monitoring the street, which, as you heard from Mr. Miranda, they've significantly cleaned up that area in a short time in cooperation with the city as well and what you guys have done with the Caltrans easement and cutting all that back. You know, we've also, and our group, we've adopted the highway and the Caltrans easement there. So we're currently cleaning the easement every other week. And we've been doing that for quite a few months. That was a request made by council in our last hearing, so we're doing that. The, we're adding exterior lighting to the building. And there'll be some lighting that will be over the easement, there'll be pole lighting, there'll be lighting on the structure itself. You'll have the two gates there as well that will be kind of securing the property at night. And in addition, in addition to that, you know, part of our public benefit offering is we would re-review kind of the patrol in, I think, three years from now. And that would be at the city's discretion if we continue to do that twice a day or if we reduce that just really based on need. But I'm very proud of, you know, how the aesthetics, I know we've only been talking about kind of the development agreement side, but I'm proud of how the aesthetics of the building and the rendering of the building, what this building is going to look like. I do think it's, it's really adding and going to beautify a part of the city that kind of needs a little bit of love. It's going to be kind of a billboard, in my opinion, for the city as people are getting off and passing by on the ninety-one and they're getting off on the exit there to see that things are happening in Bellflower. You know, there's not a lot of development happening in California or throughout the country right now. It's tough, the real estate market is challenging. I think to have, you know, a Class A facility like this under construction, I think once it's completed, the product is only going to be, you know, a tremendous billboard for future development. It also is kind of, it's a proof of concept. And when other developers are coming in to develop other things in the area, I think architecturally, it's something that council can point, can point to as a standard for what, you know, the type of design that you're looking for. And it shouldn't just be kind of a C M U block building. You know, the council would like something and the city should have something that, that kind of adds to the overall environment for the residents.
No, and I would agree with you, what you've done there before you've even built anything, just take an ownership, for lack of a better term, of having the patrols and then the city lent, spent a lot of time with his crews cleaning up that right of way.
Yeah.
And so it's not nearly as ominous back there as it once was.
Yeah, no, I think it's great. And I know, like Mr. Miranda said, I think all the residents in vans and people in that community have already have seen the difference that it's made just with us spending some time and putting some patrol there. And I think having, you know, building there and us being permanent residents and part of the community is only going to benefit the immediate community in that area and also the greater community, you know, in Bellflower. You know, we plan to be active, you know, participants in the community.
So tell me about the actual rental of property. I assume there are going to be different size units that can be rented for periods of time.
Correct, yeah, there'll be a unit mix ranging from smaller five by five units up to ten by thirty units.
So you could rent, the largest one would be three hundred square feet?
Approximately. We haven't done the full unit mix yet, but I think that's probably what our larger size unit would be.
And you're going to have four stories, all of them be identical, one story to the next, is that true?
For the most part.
Same corridor layout?
Exactly.
And you've got fire suppression in there, or how's that go?
Yeah, we do.
So it's sprinklered?
Sprinkler.
Okay. And you've checked out with the fire department, there are hydrants near the building, all that good stuff?
Yes.
All right, because that could be an impediment as well.
Yes, we have.
But, no, I think that, you know, in a perfect world, it would be a hotel, but I got to look at the reality of it all. They're not lining up to use that property for that use, you know? And we had such, and it probably wouldn't be that enthusiastic, Wood Springs had not been so, so successful.
Right.
But that's all my questions.
What are the hours of the storage facility, is it a?
Seven to seven.
Seven to seven?
Yeah. I will point out that the Wood Springs group is also enthusiastic because it is a complimentary use to their hotel.
You see many people coming off of Artesia, they're both going to come around on Passage and Palm, aren't they?
We're going to, our wayfinding is going to be from Passage and Palm. You'll have egress or ingress for customers through the, through the shared access easement through the Wood Springs, but mostly everyone's going to be coming from there.
How many visits a day do you usually have in a, it's hard to predict how many people are going to want their stuff.
Under, under twelve.
Really, twelve, fourteen people?
It's very low, low impact.
And that's people putting stuff in, taking stuff out and that's about it.
Exactly. And, and, you know, as the staff said, our unit is fully interior climate controlled. It's something that doesn't exist currently in the city. So there'll be no, you know, cars parked outside with, you know, loading and unloading and kind of blight on the street.
You heard Mr. Wehage's question as to the contents.
I did.
So explain how you determine what's in the building.
So we're working with a third-party manager, which is most likely going to be extra space storage. And extra space storage is the largest third-party manager in the country with, I don't know the exact number, but several thousand self-storage facilities throughout the country. They have their onsite staff, they have protocol to make sure that what people are bringing into the facility, you know, is not, nothing hazardous. And I don't know the exact, you know, the way they, the exact way that they do do that, but I can get back to the city.
Or a sofa with a bunch of roaches in it or.
Fifty-five gallon drum.
Right.
And so like, on the artist rendering, Senator Staff report, it's extra space storage is.
Yes.
So is that already, is that you have a development agreement with an operator of extra space storage?
We're in, we're in negotiation, we're in talks with them.
It could be another names, but.
If it wasn't them, it would be another, another national one.
Okay.
But the way we designed the building is we actually only use branding for accent color. So if we did go with another brand, it would really just change the signage.
Change the sign, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the one they built in Cerritos, it was built as another brand, the big one on sixty-five and then, and a six oh five and then, I don't know, three or four months later, it was another brand.
Right.
Different color and everything, change of color for colors, that was strange. One question that I just thought of, so on your, in lieu of T O T menu, or lack of better terms, what if the storage facility sells? Does, is that in the escrow orders to continue paying? Who pays?
It's a good question. The development agreement, as with any development agreement, would get recorded against the property. And we have an operating memorandum, which we'd have to draft that implements this, that makes it on an ongoing basis. So it would continue on.
Goes to continue, nor they go out of business.
Correct, it's recorded against the property.
Got it, okay.
But my understanding is we could not keep them from having a business license. If we thought we could revoke their business license because they didn't pay the one seventy, that's not on the table.
Technically, your business license is a tax that someone can pay regardless of whether their business is operating legally or not. If they want to pay us that tax, we will take their tax money. And ostensibly, they have to pay that tax. It has a separate question entirely from the zoning or use of the property.
If the operator didn't pay the one seventy, what are ramifications for us to recover?
As with any other, well, in this case, with the development agreement, you would go through that process to, you would go through a process under the development agreement and the operating memorandum to recover that funding. The, in the case of T O T, for instance, with a hotel, you'd have, if they owed that money in arrears and did not pay that money, anything going forward, of course, if a hotel closes, obviously you can't recover. But if a hotel would owe that T O T and hadn't paid that T O T, we would go through a tax lien process like any other tax. In this case, it'd be slightly different, it'd be through the development agreement process.
A little gun shy after cannabis payments.
A perfect example. In those instances, there's a tax lien process that we go through to recover those owed taxes.
That's why I like the bottom, the two point five.
Mr. Borg, so how does it work? So you're the developer, you build it, you put a brand on it, the building's leased or sold to that?
No, we're the owners of the building.
So you're the owners and you just lease it to that brand?
Right, we manage the asset.
So the owner of the building pays the, in lieu of?
Correct, coincidentally, it actually runs very similarly the way a hotel operates. You know, Wood Springs, for example, doesn't own that building, it's owned by the developer. Wood Springs is the manager. So in our case, Extra Space is the management company. They operate the facility, they rent out the units and we are the owner. And we manage the asset via, yeah.
Manage the asset, okay, got it, okay. All right, let's. All right, let's, uh, anybody want a health break? I do.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, sure, oh, yeah, got your attention, huh?
Jason, have you had any questions of us while you got, we got you up here?
No, I I do not, I think all my questions have been answered.
They say, hey, what about that? But your staff has gotten you in a place where you get it all.
I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna, uh, take a recess for a break for, uh, health reasons. Couple of us up here ready, older guys. And, uh, we'll do that, so we'll reconvene in, uh, ten minutes. Okay, let the record reflect that we've reconvened from our mini recess. We're gonna come in and do something different. There's only one item on the agenda when public hearing and, uh, we had somebody recuse themselves. But we want to get the consent calendar out of the way so, uh, Mr. Sanchez can go home after that, he don't have to be here for business. It was, uh, what the council thought was the best thing for the team.
So mayor, I'm making motion to approve the consent calendar.
As is?
I've gotta, I've gotta announce what I'm out on, don't I?
I want to get a, we can get a motion, second, first, if you want.
I'll make a second.
Okay, motion on the floor, Mayor Protem, Sunny Santa, second by Councilmember Sanchez.
Mr. Mayor.
Any recusals?
Oh, thank you.
Any recusals or conflicts or any items pulled?
Item B, I'm out because, uh, have a property in the general area. And part, uh, out on D as well. Same, same deal, property nearby. So I'll be recusing from those two, fourteen B and D, boy and David.
I'm gonna recuse myself from item fourteen B.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I was recused from item fourteen B, but, uh, I was randomly selected through, uh, the random drawing back in, uh, February ten of twenty twenty-five to be able to participate on that.
When are you gonna?
I have no recusals.
For the first time.
Welcome to the club.
Okay, three against two. Two and a half, Victor's only got a half. All right, uh, motion on the floor for the balance of the consent calendar with, uh, Coops, uh, and Dutton, uh, recusing on fourteen B and Coops also on D. Without objection, that'll be the order of the consent counter.
Victor's dismissed.
Okay, Victor, you can go home with your baby.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Okay, why don't you change a diaper for us while you're gone? All right. Yeah, in hindsight, we should have done that before we started this public hearing. But, uh, with that, we fixed it. All right, uh, we're here for item eleven A. And I had someone in the audience talk to me and to want to know if they could still come up. Let me see if there's any questions about this project, this storage facility, in anybody's head out there that want to share them with us. Come on up, Ms. Williams.
Good evening again, I'm Mayor Dutton and City Council. Listening to all the discussion tonight and the choice of having a limited option or limited whatever hotel versus the storage. I think because of the location of this parcel, having a motel in that area that's very limited in services, I think we would see an increase of probably security costs, having sheriffs out, having more security patrols, because the people, I don't want to, you know, generalize this, but in that kind of location, it's it's going to not be the highest level hotel. And I think it would attract people that may cause more problems. And I really do believe it would lead to higher security and and sheriff costs to have something like that there. And it wouldn't draw in a lot of people because you can't see it. And I think storage would be an ideal, um, si- uh, business for that type of setting. And I just think the financial of the two, I think even after all that discussion about the different ways to get the money, I think overall, it would be, even at the worst level that we would get from the storage, would be better than the overall cost over a time of of lifetime of that motel, just for security reasons, upkeep to the property, damage to the property, and just problems for that area overall. Not only to that hotel, but it could spread to the following or the adjacent properties too, including Wood, the other hotel there. Just something to consider, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else? Okay, not seeing any, then we'll get Mr. Borg up here. Okay. Anybody think any more questions to ask the applicant while we were at recess?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Borg, I'm I'm sure that by now you know where I'm coming from. Yeah, it took me a while to kind of go to that, close to the fence, so to speak. So, uh, help me jump over the fence, let's put it that way. My, again, I'm just wanted to reiterate, my biggest issue is the, the money coming in for the city. That's, to me, that's the, that's the crux of my issue at this point, okay? I pass these states where in hotel versus storage and things like that. But, um, I I want to see more benefits for the city. So let me try this. Jim, can you show the, uh, the four options again? All right. I I really want the la- with the one-time payment, although we don't have to make a decision tonight. If I were to make a decision tonight, that will be my recommendation. The last one, the one-time payment of two and a half. So, um, Mr. Borg, what would you say if you offer three point five million?
We can't afford to do that, the project won't work at that number.
Okay, all right, I thought I should ask. All right, thank you.
Let me try something. What do we split the baby, made it three?
Again, there there's really not a lot of meat on the bone with this.
Well, I'm just, you know, I gotta try, you know?
We we are giving a lot of benefit to the city. We've also run into a liquefaction issue as I'm, uh, on the site, which is adding an additional one point two plus million dollars to our, our project costs, which we didn't underwrite for at the beginning. So there's not a lot of room there.
So would you, in your heart of hearts, rather than be on the hook into an item for one seventy, or pay, what would you rather do? Pay one lump sum or would you like to have a ongoing payment situation?
You know, for for us, either option, it works for us.
Six or one and a half dozen the other.
Exactly, it it's really, you know, the idea is it's a benefit to the city. So however the city thinks they can best utilize the the money is is fine with us.
And you understand my philosophy, I'd rather not partner with you, for lack of a better term.
Right.
You know, just say, okay, we got our money, we're cool, have a have a good life. And you can rent it, you can, uh, lease it, you can flip it, you don't have ever ride a cotisal in there. Oh, and by the way, you gotta pay a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. But hopefully you get the two point five or whatever we decide upon out of the sale of it.
So you don't want to take the money and reinvest it in the storage?
Well, I haven't got your rate of return, I might be, you know? I know, I have, I I skirted the issue, I never ask what you hope for the income stream, because I'm not gonna go there. But because that's none of my business, and I know it's variable. But I just talked to a member of, uh, of the public and they said he'd rented one in Cerritos and it's ten by ten for seventy-eight bucks. And glad to get it. And explained how the security went, that the helic, the elevator only went to that floor that he had to be. He couldn't be hanging out at all the other four floors.
Yeah.
So, you know, those are the things that make a difference in the long-term usage there.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's managed by Extra Space as well, they do a really good job of of making sure that the customers are really only going to their unit, they're being watched while they're in the facility. Uh, you know, they they use, I'm sure, A I and their cameras to to make sure that whoever's going in is coming out.
Right, and I have confidence that you're gonna have the same caliber of, uh, facility.
I I think we will have, uh, a higher quality of security since it's it's more, it it'll be more up-to-date facility. That facility, I believe, was built about six or seven years ago.
Do you have any concern for your neighbors to the west at those ten buildings next door?
Um, concerned?
Fire, uh, I guess that's biggest, that's our friends from Habitat.
Yeah.
You know?
Um, not, we're not concerned, I mean, I think we have a really good fire plan in place if there were to be an issue. So that that's not a concern. Um, I think our our building is is solid, um, and would withstand if if there was a fire next door. We would, um, provide, you know, e- access for fire to put that fire out and I, our our building would would be okay. We 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 do hope that if if we are approved, that they would be good neighbors, we know we would be good neighbors, but there's no concern with them.
You building a block building? Is the building gonna be a block, most of it?
Block or steel, or both?
It's it's both.
So you've done a soils report, report on this parcel already?
We have.
And we know a liquefaction is up here because we built a parking structure over it.
Yeah. So you know it's it's not a, it's not a nice surprise.
Is, uh, storage facility heavier than a hotel? I don't know, you.
I mean, our facility is heavier than a than a forty thousand square foot, uh, you know, hotel, yes. But I I couldn't speak to that.
I know, is that, yeah. I don't think there was liquefaction at the other hotel site. I know, Elizabeth, do you know that?
I can't, I can't recall off the top of my head.
I know, they didn't drive piles out there, I know that, they have other ways to mitigate it.
Um, but there was likely, well, there had to have been a soils report submitted. I just don't know if, uh, what the liquefaction results were.
Yeah, we actually, we were given their soils report originally when we started the project. And and we didn't assume that, you know, or underwrite any liquefaction because theirs was clean. But when we did our report, there there was a liquefaction issue.
Does it just appear? I mean, I don't know.
As we've discussed many times, soil conditions are site-specific.
I mean, that's why they didn't build that other hotel there. So it doesn't matter how, on any of these menu items, that's why you put them there, because it doesn't matter, it's it's offered to the city of Bellflower.
Correct, yeah, I think it's up to whatever, you know, council.
You can live with any one of them.
Correct.
Administratively, from staff's perspective, obviously, the easiest one is a lump sum payment at the beginning. It makes the administrative work on the backend far easier. The only reason those other options really exist is based on the conversations we'd had the last time we were here about, uh, the council wanted to see some ongoing payment structure. But if that's not the council's preference and you prefer that one-time payment, certainly from the administrative side, it makes our life a lot easier as well.
I'd like to make that decision tonight so Jason knows that.
Yeah.
Well, first, we gotta decide one project or before, we gotta do the one to four.
Well, I mean, we don't even have to decide, it's if we want the project with any one of those.
No, I get it, but I think that, well, I want to give the applicant the benefit of the doubt as to knowing what he's got to scrape up to make it work. He is, we are, yeah.
But we've discussed it so thoroughly tonight, I hate to bring up a whole new evening of discussion on the metrics of it all.
Well, let's close the public hearing and and get to business.
Close the public hearing.
Unless you have anything else to say?
I do not, I do not.
Yeah, okay, good enough. Does anybody in the audience have any last thoughts before we close the public hearing? Okay. Got a motion by?
I made a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor by Coop, second by Morris.
Thank you.
Uh, without objection, that'll be the order. Yeah, it's closed. Okay, let's go into some council discussions. See where this is gonna lay.
It's gonna land.
Got an attorney question. If this item goes for a vote, and of course, it'll be including all those menu items, for us to decide on any of those in the future, because we're gonna have two years of construction and documents getting done, to do that, can we do that just by a, a verbal in the hallway, so to speak, or do we have to come up here as an agenda item?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so I think there are two questions in the one question that you had, one is.
That'd be me.
One is, in order to introduce the, uh, well, eventually to adopt the ordinance, if that's what you want to do for the development agreement, there have to be three affirmative votes to do that.
Right.
The second question is, how do you implement any one of these, uh, choices? And I think the answer to that is provide direction tonight about where you are at for the city manager to execute an operating memorandum, which would be what would implement the actual mechanics of any one of these, these options. Now, it's then up to the city manager whether or not he decides to bring it back to the city council for ratification, which, knowing the city manager, he probably would opt to do rather than simply execute whatever was directed tonight.
We do it on a consent calendar?
We can absolutely do it on a consent calendar, it's not actually a legal requirement that that it come back to the city council, but certainly a good government function.
The city manager could pull the council and then get something on the consent calendar, would that work?
Or just have it, have the discussion on the consent calendar.
If it was unanimous, if not, yeah.
Yeah, and as, as you know, the city manager's not pulling council about a substantive item like this. So provide general direction tonight or have the expectation that comes back on to a future agenda for you to choose one of these options.
Did that help? Okay. I like any one of those items on there. I'm like, the first one, I did it, I liked the hundred and seventy thousand for the twenty years. My, what I like, but I'm just saying, so there's something in there that I like, so.
I like the two point five because then we're in total control of the money. And we don't have to wonder about another payment, we don't have to worry about who operates it, we don't have to worry about the condition. We we've got the money to invest. And keep in mind, as was stated tonight, it'll be two years if everything goes good before he has any tenants in there. And that's when he'll be able to pay the two point five, that's two years from now.
Two point five instead of thirty percent.
Exactly, so if we decide not to go forward and not approve this and go out shopping for a hotel, which has been non-existent for the last five years, we're, now we're at four, that'll take two years, maybe more, and then another two years. Now, there's, now suddenly, how much time have we lost? We've got two years' worth of interest on two point five? I mean, time is money. And the quicker we make a decision on this, the quicker we're gonna get the money in. But if he doesn't have a completed project, we won't have our money until that occurs. But if we gotta start all over, he spent three years to get to this point, there's no reason why a hotel won't take that long again. Now we're at five years. And look at all the money we've left on the table. And look at all the money we've left on the table because we didn't have in the account. That's my philosophy.
So I guess you could live with two point five.
I can live with two point five because I think it's the cleanest. I'll be honest with you, when I first saw this project, I had more enthusiasm for a hotel, as some of us indicated. But because the market has changed, COVID changed it immensely. And then we get to the portion where it's explained by Jim when he goes out and shops our city. They said, we need a hundred, a hundred and twenty unit hotel or it doesn't pencil out. Well, that property doesn't even pencil out parking-wise, because that's the big deal. I've even thought about whether or not we could make an agreement with the Edison Company over there because originally, this property was purchased so that we put a Home Depot there, if you go way back.
Yeah.
And but because we couldn't get parking under the power lines, that put this whole deal aside. And likewise, there's no guarantee we'd ever get parking over there to help put Wood Springs over there and then get a little more for a potential hotel. Uh, it's a great location for looking from the freeway, not so great, we're looking from Artesia Boulevard. And it, this property is not going to be serviced by Artesia Boulevard. It's gonna be serviced by going around the back of the Ford, uh, the old, uh, Ford dealer, um, STG.
And your phone's gonna tell you how to get there.
And your phone's gonna tell you how to get there and you're gonna go back there and there's no traffic. I agree what was stated by Ms. Williams, that if we do have another hotel there, we are opening ourselves up for more transitory activity there, uh, that would be more negative than positive. Whereas we have this, they're open from seven to seven, it's well-lit, people come in. Uh, they got twelve to fourteen cars a day that come in there between seven and seven, that's only two an hour, one an hour. That's minimal. In the meantime, Len's done a great job of cleaning up the freeway along the edge there. And this, it it lends itself to this kind of project that is available and we can go forward with it if we get the right votes here. But that that's my, as transparent as I can be, is how I feel about this project and what potential we could have. But we can kick the can down the road two or three years and hope for the best. And but we're still gonna, I know, God bless us, so we're at three hundred thousand dollars at the Wood Springs. I mean, we'd expect that. And maybe I'm reading more than that than I should, because I think a lot of the World Energy people that are working in Paramount on that on that refinery are staying there overnight, and that may not go on forever. Uh, but something else might come along, but it's, so far, we've done pretty good on that.
Yeah, we nailed it.
Yeah.
Well, with that said, I could go for the one-time payment then. Quicker and cleaner.
And who knows, interest might even go up. Could go down, you never know.
It's gonna go down, I bet.
Well, maybe Sunny will take her to the racetrack.
Let's hear from Wendy.
I would go with the one-time payment.
So you're okay with the project?
I'm okay with the project.
You want to chime in, Sunny?
Sunny, you've got to say something here.
I've said, I've said enough.
You did say a bunch.
I I think you know where my questions are, so I leave it at that.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I do, I'll make a motion to approve the project with the, uh, one-time payment of two point five.
I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Coops for the approving the project with a one-time payment of two point five million. And a second, uh, for that motion from Councilmember Morris. Call roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Santas?
No.
Councilmember Coops?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Dutton?
Yes.
All right, we're down to item fifteen, council reports. Coops, you got anything tonight?
No, I'm, uh, exhausted.
What about Countant Mayor Pro Tem?
Uh, yes, I just want to reiterate that today we have the Veterans' Event at the Veterans Memorial, uh, Library Garden. I want to thank, um, the public work staff and also public, um, Parks and Recreation staff for organizing a very uh, well-attended event that was so nice. And I think attendance was really good today. So anyway, and also tomorrow is Veterans' Day, so I want to thank all our veterans, uh, for your service and, uh, for whatever you have done to our country. So thank you, veterans. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Morris, you have anything?
I I would like to say, um, during the last month, I was sick and I was in the hospital. And while I was there, I had cards from residents, um, that came to my house. And I would like to thank those that that did send me cards and I also received flowers. Um, and I just really appreciated it. The thoughts were were very welcoming and, um, needed when when you're sitting there like just boo-hooing it in a sense. So anyways, thank you again to the residents and to all of you guys too, uh, staff. And, uh, I really appreciated the thoughts and prayers. Thanks, that's it.
And I'd like to also re- reiterate, uh, at the, we, we had a Veterans Memorial, uh, service today at our Veterans Park Memorial. And I just want to commend also on staff, the way the park looked. Every year, it seems like, uh, staff mixes it up and does a little more and makes it more exciting. And, uh, this year, it happened again. And, uh, the new facelift on the facility was good and I really appreciate what what we did and 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 I'm sure all the veterans that are there really enjoyed it and it and it was a nice place to be today. And with that, we're gonna re- adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to five thirty P M, Monday, November twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five.